I'd like to call to order the city council meeting for March 2, 2015. Could we have the roll call, please?
Mayor Proton Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Bruno. Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Drosh.
Here.
Councilmember Ferris.
Here.
Councilmember Mulvaney.
Here.
Mayor Walz.
Here.
We have a quorum.
With everybody present, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance and invocation led by Mayor Proton Brown.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, as we prepare to celebrate Mason's sesquicentennial anniversary, we offer this prayer of gratitude for the many blessings you have bestowed on our community throughout the years. We are grateful for those that founded Mason and laid the foundation that we build upon even today. We are grateful for our public safety and emergency responders that protect us from hurt, harm, and danger. We are grateful for our churches that are a beacon of hope and our service organizations that call us to love one another through charitable acts. We are grateful for our businesses that provide jobs and the goods and services that we need to carry out our daily lives. We are grateful for our schools that educate and invest in the lives of tomorrow's leaders. Most of all, we are grateful, oh Lord, for your divine providence which has guided and sustained our community these many years. As we look to the days ahead, we pray, God, be merciful unto us and bless us and cause your face to shine upon us. Amen.
Thank you, Mayor Proton Brown. Are there any announcements this evening? Councilmember Ferris.
I just wanted to make sure that everyone knew that the spring has arrived. Dairy Hill is open today.
Are there any other signs of spring you could share with us?
Actually, I did hear a bird making noise in the backyard and there was actual water on the road, not just plain, just ice, okay?
Any other announcements?
Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Proton Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to remind the community that next Monday, March 9, at 6 o'clock PM, we will celebrate and officially kick off our sesquicentennial year. So we invite everyone to come out and attend. We should have a very nice program that kicks off a year-long of celebration. So we hope you'll come out. If nothing more, it gives you an opportunity to say "sesquicentennial." Thank you.
Will there be a test on that?
No.
That is an inside program for those of you who are still cold.
Any other announcements? Is there anybody from the floor that would like to address the council this evening on an item that is not already on our agenda? First item, next item on our agenda is a presentation from Mr. Pat Hicks regarding the Sun Dried Music Festival. Pat, if you would approach the podium and give us your name and address as if we don't know. And...
Thank you. My name's Patrick Hicks. I'm the vice president of the Sun Dried Music Festival. I reside at 1427 West Dansville Road. School address, Mason. Sorry, vive. But I do a lot of stuff in this town. Again, I'm with the Sun Dried Music Festival, which will be coming up again Friday, February 28 through Sunday, the 30th. We've already kicked off our pre-event meetings and are working hard to continue to hold a quality event. We're making adjustments to ensure that it's a safe, friendly, and appealing event as in the past. We will again continue to have a 50-50 raffle, a church service on Sunday, a second stage to showcase new acts, and of course, our main stage, which features local and Michigan talent. We're expanding our children's area, a little bit bigger this year, to include more kids' entertainment, and are looking again at a third stage for the young and young at heart. We do have the possibility of maybe a street dance occurring, still in the planning stages. We want to get everybody from the town out and kicking it up, of all ages. We're always working on our vendor area that includes food, gifts, and souvenirs. We're going to continue to offer incentives to Chamber and DDA members with discounts to encourage local first. We would like some of the local businesses to get involved in vendors, and of course, we want to make the local businesses known as we have this three-day event. We want them to be involved. Our beverage tent area will remain in its regular location to provide access to the music. The tent has been a large success and safe, mostly due to the great volunteers who work with the Mason Police Department and our Michigan Corrections Officers for security. Second year, this will be our second year with the corrections officers. They did a fine job, and again, they're all volunteer. They're just, they're a tremendous help. With lots of work, great staff, much help from the city, it's DPW workers, the police and fire staff, we've been able to have a safe and profitable festival. I think, as people have seen for the last few years, we're, every year we tweak it, we're working on it a little bit better, and we're trying to make it better to really showcase the town of Mason and everything that Mason has to offer. That's our prime concern. Since in the past, we asked for the approval of our request for street closures that include Jefferson between Ash and Sycamore, Maple Street, from east of the Mason State Bank Lot to Barn Street, Barn Street from Maple to Ash, both sides, the eastern half of the Inham Court Alley. These closures would be from 8:00 AM Friday, August 28 to 4:00 PM Sunday, August 30. We would also request a waiver of the amplified music ordinance on Friday night until 12:00 midnight, Saturday until 1:00 AM Sunday morning, and Sunday morning until 4:00 PM. That's when we have our church event. We would also ask for permission to rent the city generator, as in the past, and use of a fire hydrant to supply water to the vendors and for cleanup. We appreciate the city's support and the council's support, but I will tell you, we absolutely need your help of all the organizations and businesses and all our residents to make this festival a success that has been the last five years. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask. If not, we will see you the August 28 through the 30th.
Are there any questions for Mr. Hicks? Mayor Proton Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Hicks, for your presentation and the work that you and all the volunteers do for the Sun Dried Music Festival each year. I just wanted to ask and give you an opportunity to plug, is there a website or a place where residents can go to get more information about what's being planned this year?
We are currently working on a website right now that hopefully will be up in the next few weeks. Right now, it goes through the Mason DDA. It's not a lot going on there right now. We're trying to get it up and running. We want to make it way better than it's been in the past, to make it easy for everybody. So it's kind of that, another one of those work in progress, one of those things. Every year, we find something new, we find a leak that we fix, or we find some way to tweak it to make it better. And right now, that's probably one of our big concerns with the meetings that we're having, is to try to get there. As of right now, we don't have a lot.
I would just encourage you then, if, once that becomes available, please feel free to send a correspondence to the council. That way, it can be included in our city packets, and therefore, the entire public can see that and then know where to go to get more information.
Absolutely, and I think we will find some way to advertise so people can get on, because again, you know, we're looking at people from all areas to come to this town. It's nice that we have our citizens come in, but we want people from all over the area, as far away as the website travels, to come to the city of Mason and enjoy it.
Great, thank you.
Other questions? Pat, I have one. This is informational only, and as Mayor Proton put it, possibly another chance to plug the event. This early on, there are still questions, just general questions being asked, and the Chamber of Commerce information does not list any official times per day of the events, the 28th, 29th, 30th. I see the time, I know they're in the request, but are those the times the general public is, it's open to the general public, or does that include some cleanup after hours? I'm just asking, what are the official hours at this point?
Pretty much the official hours, the bands, we open up about 5, 6 o'clock, and then the band starts at 7:30?
7.
7 o'clock.
7 to about 11.
And then there's all these little bit of cleanup in there. Then all day, we start at noon and go till approximately midnight on Saturday. And then the church services isn't totally scheduled yet, but I think last year it started 10:30, 11 o'clock, and went till early in the afternoon, kind of depending on how their service runs, which usually hopefully gives us enough time to get everything cleaned up and Mason put back together by late Sunday afternoon. The hours, we tweak a little bit for things, you know, we may start a little later, but within the parameters of what we've asked for, they'll be in there. There's, we're not going to do anything, any crazy, anything crazy or different.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Thanks for the presentation.
Thank you, sir.
That brings us to the consent agenda, including the approval of minutes, approval of bills, and a motion for the Sun Dried Music Festival and a motion for the Mason State Bank 5K race. Mayor Proton?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented. Second.
Motion's been made to approve and been seconded for the consent agenda to be approved? I didn't come out right. Is there any discussion, anyway? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Regular business, item A, Resolution 2015-12, Authorization Releasing Funds for Local Streets Construction. Mr. Colburn.
Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, this particular resolution is addressing the street program as we've bid out. We went through a public bid process in regard to conducting construction of the streets, and this particular resolution, it's the authorization to proceed forward with the bid on Maple Street. Now, this is combining some of the funds from two different budget years, the current budget year and next budget year, in regard to East Maple Street between Rogers and Temple Streets, Washington Street, and east, and East Ash, from East Ash and Maple Streets, South Lansing Street between West Maple and West Ash Streets, and then we have a repair, it's about 220 feet long over on West Cherry Street. And so this particular bid came in, it also includes infrastructure in terms of water, sanitary, and such, at $1,474,682,070. There were five bids. We've included in the write-up from Wolverine Engineering, the three low bids, as well as the engineer's estimate, that usually goes in ahead of time, and as you can see, it comes in a little bit below, in terms of Reese Riley being the qualified low bidder. The staff is recommending that we proceed forward with Reese Riley, as they've conducted a lot of the street construction in the city prior to this and have been a very good performer in regard to constructing streets and infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. Colburn. Any questions for Mr. Colburn? Councilmember Drosha?
Actually, I don't have a question. Please excuse me, my daughter is injured herself, she's a home alone, and I need to run home and check on her. I hope to come back later.
All right, thank you. If there are no questions, I would entertain a motion for, to consider the resolution as read. Mayor Proton Brown?
I move to consider Resolution 2015-12 as having been read.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to have the Resolution 2015-12 considered as being read. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Numbers are dwindling. Do we have one to introduce?
Yes, we do. City Council Resolution Number 2015-12, Authorizing Releasing Funds for Local Streets Construction, inclusive of East Maple Street between Rogers and Temple Streets, Washington Street between East Ash and East Maple Streets, South Lansing Street between West Maple and West Ash Streets, and repair at 433 West Cherry Street. Introduced by Brown, seconded by Drosha.
Honorable Mayor.
Yes.
I apologize for interrupting, but with Mr. Drosha having left, I wanted to check on that, him not being here at this meeting to have signed the resolution. No, I understand that. He's not here for this part of the meeting. I'm going to recommend, in terms of a second, second or...
Okay. Pardon?
It looks like only it's going to sign it. We don't have a second at this time?
There we go.
The resolution has been introduced by Ferris and seconded by Drosha.
I'm sorry, I'm not making myself clear.
The motion, the motion to consider being read as seconded? Or...
The motion was introduced by Brown and seconded by Ferris.
Okay, there we go.
Excuse me.
Is there any discussion on the resolution? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Resolution's approved 5-0. Regular business, item B, is a discussion entailing an update on the Mason Library boiler system, and Mr. ...
Honorable Mayor, if I may, I want to first of all, ask that Mr. David Haywood come up and let you know that he had worked diligently on this, through this last week, on this project, and as you can imagine, it was a high priority, and he'll have a very positive report for you.
Thank you, David Haywood, zoning and development director. As you've probably heard, there was a issue with the boiler at the library to the extent that it began not functioning properly, and we were getting exhaust into the building. It started with a complaint, or not a complaint, but a notification from library staff that exhaust fumes were entering the building. I checked it out. Certainly, it was alarming. I had the fire chief come right over, who detected carbon monoxide in the boiler room at significantly dangerous levels. So we immediately closed the library, evacuated the staff that was there, it was not open to the public at the time, and then kind of started into the process of, okay, what do we, what do we do now? Now that the building was secure and vacated. So really, it turned into quickly a, how do we, is this fixable, or is it something that we have to replace? And that took a significant process to figure out who the right contractor personnel were to do that. Since we have a heating and cooling contract with a contractor that's on record for that building, we started with them. They did find a boiler person that they work with, who inspected it and determined that it essentially was, was just plugged up from years of debris, material, soot, that kind of thing. Cleaned it all out, tore it apart, cleaned it all out, and put it back together, and it is functioning now. Took some process to get to that point, but it is back in order. The library opened this morning. We had temporary heaters in there to keep the building from freezing, which we were successful in doing. And so on Friday, as of Friday, we weren't sure if the boiler was still fixable. We had a company rebuilding the boiler, cleaning it and rebuilding the boiler, but at the time that we sent out the staff report, we weren't sure if that was going to work. So we were kind of in a mode of trying to get estimates for a replacement boiler, because at that point, that's what we thought we would have to do. On Saturday, I got the nod from the boiler technician that it was fixed and operating and functional and safe. I verified that myself with a carbon monoxide detector, there's nothing in the building. I did that several times through the course of the weekend, and even as early as this morning. So we are safe on that regard, but now we're kind of, the good thing is that we're kind of looking at a scenario of if we had to replace it, we'd have to spend, you know, upwards of $30,000, $40,000 for a new boiler in an unfunded fiscal year, as opposed to now we can kind of back up, develop some specifications, and kind of plan for this expenditure and push it into the next year. The technician did say that the boiler should last another year or two, or kind of, who knows at this point? So it's in sound working order. We were afraid that there might be some cracks in some of the radiator parts, some of the cast iron, but it appears that everything is in good shape, so we have some time to think about basically what the next step is. The boiler was, the year built on the boiler is 1960, so we're looking at a boiler that's 55 years old. Everyone who looked at it said that's about, you're on borrowed time ultimately. Cast iron parts that have been heating and cooling and heating and cooling for that long tend to want to crack around this time. So the next failure will be, the cleaning it out, it should be, that should last us for a long time, but the next failure is going to be a pretty critical one. So this has been an item that was in our CIP Capital Improvement Plan for the past two years. Ironically, I put it in the proposed budget this year about two weeks ago. So, of course, that's Murphy's Law, but, so we've been trying to be proactive with this and moving this forward, but it just snuck in ahead of us. So we are basically reporting to you that this is where we're at. Our next step is to develop some specifications for what we would need to service that building for a new boiler, and then I guess go out to bid at that point if it survives the budget So at this time, I guess I could take any questions or comments or concerns at this point.
Questions for Mr. Haywood? Mayor Proton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Haywood, for all of your work and diligence on this issue this week. I know it's probably taken the bulk of your time. Two questions this evening. The first is, do you have an estimate of when library operations might resume? I know, last time I checked, they said that library activities were canceled through March 7.
I can't comment exactly on what their schedule is in terms of how far out they've canceled and how they can backfill that, but as far as, as soon as this morning, they were open, the entire building was open for service. So how they schedule their activities, you should probably stay tuned to their website, the Capillary District Library website for updates on that.
And also, with regard to the repair that took place over the weekend, do we have a cost, or invoice of what that cost? And I guess more specifically, I'm wondering whether or not that was within any maintenance or repair estimates that we might have included in this year's budget?
Unfortunately, I do have a ballpark figure. We're looking at probably about $1,500 for temporary heaters, probably about $1,600 or $1,700 for, we'll call it $2,000, for the actual repair and servicing. And then miscellaneous contractor charges for on-call service technicians to help try to assess the situation as we move forward. Quite a bit of time just in that, trying to figure out what the problem really was. It was cheaper to have technicians look at it, try to diagnose the situation before we triggered a, you know, $2,000 expense where we didn't, weren't sure if it was even worth trying to dig into it. So all of the indications early on pointed at this thing is dead, we need to move on. So, and it was kind of a last-ditch effort that, you know, have a technician start to tear into it, we're kind of at a ceiling of costs, let's not exceed this. If you get to a certain point, then we need to call it quits. So all said and done, you know, let's see, that's probably, we're looking at probably five, you know, around $5,000 or so, but we won't know until anything comes in and start digging into our service contract to see if any of this would be paid for, or to see if our insurance company would be able to pay for any of this. I doubt that our service contract would cover repairs to, repairs of this kind. I'm guessing that any boiler problems are excluded in that contract, but we'll double-check that, of course, to make sure. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Ferris?
Just to thank you for all the time and effort putting into this, I have, a number of people have been keeping, having me keep them up to date on when the library was open because they sorely miss it. And do we have, do we have carbon monoxide detectors in the library currently?
That's a good question. We do now. As of this morning, I installed two that were given to me by the fire chief, specifically recommended for this application.
Thank you.
We do both smoke and carbon monoxide.
Thank you.
I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge a couple of people that were critical in helping this, and that would be Chief, Fire Chief Kerry Minchell, and his quick analysis and recommendations for how to deal with some of the immediate potential health risks associated with the carbon monoxide that was detected. And I also have to thank the library staff, the head librarian, or the librarian for this branch, Cheryl Lyons, and Pat Taylor. Pat Taylor offered to pay for half of the heaters that were utilized in the library to keep the building from freezing, the cleanup costs afterwards, and some of the other miscellaneous costs associated with running those machines. So they were all very, very helpful in terms of being onsite, being supportive, keeping the community informed with every step that we did. So we were on the phone and texting with each other pretty much throughout the day, each day since last Monday, so, couple Saturdays and Sundays and things like that. So it was, it was a good collaborative effort, everybody worked really well, and so got to thank them for that.
Any other questions? David, assuming that, since the item has been in the CIP for several years to replace the boiler and heating system, that on the other side of the budget sessions, that remains intact, what is your approach then to facilitate the replacement at that time?
Well, I guess at this point, I would continue to proceed with the way we have it right now, which is in my proposed budget. A couple of years ago, I'm going to say it was either 2012, I can't remember the exact date, but we had an estimate from the heating and cooling company that does the HVAC preventative maintenance for this building, and that estimate was at $35,000. So I imagine, just over the course of years, that cost is going to go up a little bit, and depending on what we actually decide to go with, that cost may, may change. But probably what we'll have to do is we'll have to develop specifications and then go out to bid, and bid this out since it's a substantial cost.
And likely with a timeline that will be for next winter? Or...
I would recommend doing this in the next fiscal year, yes.
All right.
Preferably in the summer.
That was the point.
Yeah, I did, I did realize quickly that just about everybody else is in this situation, and technicians doing any kind of heating or plumbing are stretched very thin right now, so...
All right. Thank you for the update.
You're welcome.
That brings us to unfinished... That brings us to unfinished business. Councilmember Mulvaney?
None.
Mayor Proton Brown?
I have no unfinished business.
Councilmember Ferris?
None.
Councilmember Clark?
None.
New business? Councilmember Mulvaney?
None.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, I have two requests for agenda items for our March 16th, 2015 meeting. The first is something that kind of came up during our planning session, our strategic planning and goals and objectives session held before this meeting, and I would like to place on the agenda a discussion item and potential motion regarding the Rainer Park lease and buy option. And if city staff would be so kind to also include a copy of the lease agreement with SAR for that item and any steps that need to be taken in order to advance the purchasing process. The second agenda item that I would like to request is city staff has shared with us a proposed draft resolution regarding the transportation funding proposal that will be on the May 5th ballot, Proposal 2015-1. I would like to place this on our next agenda as well for discussion and possible action. And that resolution has yet to be numbered, but I believe that could be incorporated in our regular business for the next meeting. Those are the only two items that I have under new business tonight, and with that, I yield the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. Councilmember Ferris, new business?
I'm doing the update on the trails, unless you'd rather I have it under something else. But I've been attending the meetings on the trails through the Ingham County, and there is currently a proposal to expend up to fifty thousand dollars for a planner to do an inventory because they do not have staff to do that and to do recommendations for upcoming trails. At this point, it goes to the Finance Committee for approval and then to the Commission -- Board of Commissioners as a whole. My recommendation is to show people that we are interested, particularly in out county areas and not Lansley Trails necessarily, at Finance Committee meeting, which is this Wednesday at the Human Services Building at 5303 South Cedar at 6:00 PM, and the County Commissioners meeting, which is Tuesday, March 10th at 6:30 at the courthouse here in Mason. So, there you have a packet of information, including the minutes, in excruciating detail of all the discussion that went on. So, but that's the gist of it. And there is a wonderful article in the Sunday, February 22nd, the State Journal, that is also fairly comprehensive. The task force meeting on March 5th has been postponed until they find out if they've got the approval for the consultants. So, the next meeting of the Parks Board itself is the 23rd of March, and I will be there as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Clark, any new business?
The only new business I have as of about the last twenty minutes, if anybody would care to make a motion to excuse Councilmember Drosia at approximately 7:50 for a family emergency?
I would like to so move.
I'll second that motion.
The motion's been made to excuse Councilmember Drosia at approximately 7:50 to attend to a family emergency. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion's approved, five-zero. Correspondents, you have in your packet a letter from the county controller regarding the new facility and some information, some discussion about the jail and county facility. Also, a flyer from the Mason Sesquicentennial Committee, celebrating 150 years, celebration to be held here at City Hall, 6:00 PM on March 9th. Liaison reports. Councilmember Mulvaney, Historic District Commission?
We met and elected a new chairperson and vice-chairperson. The chairperson being Mrs. Clinton, I want to say Becky, right?
Yes.
Becky Clinton, and Rod Jewett as the vice-chairperson. Some discussion about our need to get historical data on the downtown buildings on the website, and that would be it.
Thank you, Councilmember Mulvaney. Mayor Proton Brown, the Planning Commission?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll keep it very short and simple. The Planning Commission will meet next Tuesday, March 10th, at 6:30 PM.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. With the sudden excused absence of Councilmember Drosia, there will not be a traffic committee liaison report tonight. Tree Commission Liaison, Councilmember Ferris?
Yes, we're still accepting recommendations for a honoree for Arbor Day. The Arbor Day recipient gets to pick the tree and where to put it, more or less. Should be of some horticultural bent or connection, not necessarily a tree person. We will take any growing person. And we also still have space for Sesquicentennial trees. There, see, I can pronounce it too. The form is on the city website. It's a hundred and fifty dollars for a tree, and I -- we still have space. The city will match the funds. So, this will go on public parkways, replacing trees lost in parks, any other place like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ferris. Are there any councilmember reports this evening? Mayor Pro -- oh, well, that's because we meet this coming week. There isn't a report yet. I even had that on my list.
I'll be glad to report on the Sesquicentennial.
On the what?
The Sesquicentennial.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Mason 150 Committee actually will not have a meeting this month in March because our normal meeting date, which is the second Monday of each month, is actually being replaced with our celebration next Monday night. Just to share a few things tonight, I've given to each councilmember a Mason 150 pen. This is courtesy of the Chamber of Commerce and the Mason 150 Club. This was a gift to -- a gift to our councilmembers. I believe it's fairly low underneath the ethics gift receipt, all of that good stuff. So, this is just an in-kind gift to all of our councilmembers, but the public can also get Mason 150 pens by joining the 150 Club that the Chamber is offering. In addition to that, I've already announced about our ceremony next Monday. We're going to have a variety of dignitaries and local officials that will be here. There will be music provided by the Mason High School Choir, as well as Dewey Longusky, who will sing and perform the Making Mason Memories theme song. We'll also have some readings by some of our eighth grade students that participated in the essay contest for the Sesquicentennial. And after the ceremony, there will be also an opportunity for members of the public to purchase some things that are on sale, especially this year. One is our Sesquicentennial souvenir book, which has been written by Becky Clinton and features a lot of good history about the community. Those will be available and on sale that night, in addition to copies of the CD with the song of Making Mason Memories on it, and a brand-new lithograph that the Chamber has created. And this is actually really neat. If you haven't seen it, it's an artistic rendering of the community, various landmarks, businesses, historic places, and historic people from Mason are all drawn on a very large, framable, I guess, canvas type of document. And so, those will be on sale for fifteen dollars, and you can purchase. They'll make wonderful wall ornaments to hang in your office or in your home. And we really just are looking forward to kicking off the year and having a great time next Monday. So, come on out. If you are unable to make it, I have been told that we are going to try to stream it on our website and also on our cable channel as well. So, everyone can participate, whether you're here in the flesh or whether you're at home with a bowl of popcorn. So, happy birthday, Mason.
Thank you, Mayor Proton Brown. Administrative Report, Mr. Colburn?
Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, I've included and forwarding to you at this point a letter that I forwarded to Mr. Timothy Morgan. He is, by the way, the new director of Ingham County Parks Department. And in essence, they had asked for public input, which this letter does, in regard to some of the things to take into consideration regarding the criteria of how they're going to spend the millage within Ingham County over the next six years. It's roughly twenty million dollars. That being said, we break out with some recommendations from some of our own experience and also point out that particularly for the out county area and some of the smaller communities, that they participate in a grant program that would help fund some of the planning processes, unless they are inclusive, of course. They've been talking about doing their own master plan. If that's inclusive of the out county area, then certainly that's what we're seeking and looking for, is the support to some of the smaller communities. So, I provide you with this letter that went out to them, and hopefully they'll continue to build their criteria that will be supportive of the county as a whole. That being said, a couple of other items, inclusive of the Michigan Place Partnership. There's a number of training modules that the state, through MISTDA and numerous other agencies, including the MSU and MML, and it's a six-modular placemaking training curriculum over a two-year period, basically that the land use educators have put together. And there's a number of these classes statewide from March through May. As a matter of fact, over thirty training programs. David Haywood was able to secure one of the training programs here at City Hall on Wednesday, April 15th, 2015, from 1:30 to 8:30. And in essence, these programs are three hours of instructions for the curriculum, and then there's a break and then another three-hour workshop. So, that will be published online, and I appreciate it, David, being able to do that because obviously it encourages Mason, for people to take a look at Mason, some of the things that we're doing right, and allows us to work with councilmembers, planning commissioner members, staff members, and the public as a whole in terms of how placemaking can work within the community. Now, the registration's free, but you must register in advance. And so, Mr. Haywood will provide that information over the internet at our website, and you can also contact him at his office. The next item I have for you is through the Building Authority. The Building Authority met, which is Mark Howe and myself. We had also at that meeting Tom Tracyak, who is also here this evening. Tom Tracyak's the city's financial planner. Eric Smith, Mark Howe, Lou Orcut, who's the managing director of Fifth Third Bank Securities, and we worked through him last time when we did the bonds for City Hall, and Michael Gresson, who's our bond attorney. And in essence, to discuss the bonds that we purchased in the previous years, they were worth about four point one -- well, four point one million as we funded City Hall. At that time, there was a program that had come out from the federal government called BABS, Buy America Bonds, and program, and it was intended to be supportive through the federal government of buying into up to thirty-five percent of the interest costs. This past year, Mr. Smith, as he monitors this, had noticed that they weren't fulfilling all those obligations, and we watched it to see if it was a one-time deal or if it was going to become a trend, and then started talking about it amongst the circle of the folks that I just referenced. As they've not been fulfilling this, we took a look at where the current bond prices are at and whether or not it'd be beneficial for the Building Authority or City Council to refinance this. And we had to find out some legalities in which Mr. Gresson's followed up with as the bond attorney as to whether or not this could be and should be done through the Building Authority or through the City Council. What he found was, we already knew it could be done through the Building Authority, but that it can be done through the City Council, and in essence, try to lower these interest rates to save the city potentially some significant funds. I requested Mr. Tracyak to be here this evening to give you a little bit more detailed information, coming as our financial planner, because it has some standing in regard to his recommendations to you as well. If I may, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Tom Tracyak to fulfill you -- to fill you in a little deeper.
Sure. Welcome, Tom. Nice to see you again.
Good evening.
If you would start by officially stating your name and address for the records and...
Tom Tracyak, 365 Broken Hills, Mason, Michigan. So, as Mr. Colburn described, the bond issue when they were originally issued, we could have sold them at the typical tax-exempt rates, but the feds were offering a program where you could sell the bonds at taxable rates, and then they'd give you a thirty-five percent rebate on the interest cost. Comparatively, that was a better deal than straight tax-exempt rates. Again, this was a program to encourage infrastructure investment. And again, as indicated, the feds have not been fulfilling that thirty-five percent. Now, even if they fulfilled that thirty-five percent, given the interest rates today, if we did a refunding, we'd still save about a hundred and forty thousand dollars of interest cost by refinancing. But given the amount that they are shortchanging that thirty-five percent, your potential savings is about two hundred and forty-five thousand. So, it's a very simple in regard to whether or not you would want to proceed with the refinancing. It's pretty straightforward. You can just reduce your interest cost by refunding. Now, those numbers I stated, those are after all costs of issuance. So, that's net to the city. Many communities are taking advantage of this now, and it's hard to tell whether or not the feds would ever go back to rebating thirty-five percent, but right now, the discussion from the Hill is that they might go in the other direction of hair cutting it further. It's highly unlikely they're going to ever restore the full thirty-five percent. And like I say, even if they did, your situation right now, you could still save money by refinancing to tax-exempt rates. As Mr. Colburn indicated, we could do this as a Building Authority bond issue again, just as we did in 2010. Nothing wrong with that. Understand that a Building Authority in this context is really just a vehicle to issue the bonds. They were more significant prior to 2001, when there was a change in law, where it made it easier for you to just issue city bonds. So, the slight advantage to doing city-issued refunding bonds instead of Building Authority refunding bonds, it has to do with how the bonds are listed in the open market, the secondary market. Unfortunately, they're listed as revenue bonds, not limited tax bonds, even though they are limited tax. The reason for that is the bond market treats it as a lease payment, which it is, but they ignore the limited tax pledge of the city behind it. And so, it'll trade out a few basis points higher, meaning you would lose a little bit of interest savings by doing it as a Building Authority refunding. But that's the idea timetable-wise. We would look, if we refund the bonds by the city, we would look for City Council to adopt a refunding bond resolution in the coming weeks, and then we'd put together an official statement, apply for the rating, and get the bonds sold. Exact timing, probably April, sometime in April, early to late.
Are there any questions for Tom? Tom, I have just one. Before we get to our net savings, what is the cost of re-bonding with the original Building Authority process?
Total cost of issuance for that size issue, and these are estimates at this time.
Approximately.
But the cost of issuance with my fee, the bond council fee ratings, is approximately fifty thousand. The underwriter's discount would be about point five percent. So, we're looking at... So we're looking at, trying to remember the par amounts on that, it would probably be in the neighborhood of $20,000 to $30,000 on the underwriter's discount.
Okay. Mr. Colburn?
Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, I'm recommending we proceed forward. We can do it either way. I wanted to bring the option to you if you felt so inclined. As Mr. Tracyak pointed out, there's a slight benefit, but timeliness is the biggest benefit here. As rates go up, and basically right now, they're saying the feds are looking at raising rates no later than the third quarter, and now discussion is maybe even sooner. Timeliness is important on this. So if we felt so inclined, I would recommend that we proceed forward. If council was not comfortable with proceeding, I've spoke with Mark Howe. He and I could certainly work administratively together to walk through the administrative process with them, but certainly wanted to offer the City Council this option.
Is that something that we'd like to see on an upcoming agenda prior to April? I'm seeing head nods.
I believe from our discussions, we could have a resolution to you by the next meeting from the original discussions. I'd have to double-check with Mr. Gresson as well, but Tom, is that still a pretty good-
Yes, he indicated that shouldn't be a problem.
All right. Well, thank you, Tom.
You're welcome.
Welcome back, John.
Thank you.
Because we are adjourned.
[laughing]